We stand to do the place. Say again?
Reporting in progress.
Okay, you can go on. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not used to that. I'd like to have everybody just take a moment. And think about those fourteen young kids in Texas. I mean, it's just something. I don't know what was in that kid's mind that went into this. It's just something horrible. And I'd like to take some time for that, if you don't mind. Thank you. Now, if you'll all stand and join me with the pledge to the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as the agenda states. I would like to ask for another moment of silence. For Jeff Chorba, who was our IT man forever. And it's gonna be a terrible way to die when he died doing what he loved. He crashed in his own airplane. And God bless him, he was a hell of a guy. Give me a moment for Jeff. Thank you again. Everybody's read the minutes? Any corrections or additions? No, if so, I'll take a motion if the minutes from April twenty second be accepted as read. As read. All favor? Aye, all opposed. Still carried. I will move into all business eight mainstream was tabled last month meeting. The lack of paperwork and drawings. We still haven't received any drawings or anything yet.
Should I come up there?
Yes, please.
I want to tell you what I did do first. That Cabazin Kadu's Realty has been completely refunded and they vacated the space.
Okay.
When I have something else available on Main Street, I'll contact them and give them first option.
All right.
Okay. You asked me to pay twelve hundred dollars for someone to examine whatever plans that I'm gonna have. That that was paid.
So he said that's being held in escrow until we see what he what he thinks.
And other than that, I came here tonight for you to tell me what you want me to do.
All right, well.
If you need me, because it's a little confusing that someone says do this, someone says do that.
What we were gonna want is an engineer drawing of a site plan.
Okay.
Of the lot and the building.
Well, I have an engineer.
And the footprint of the new building.
Okay.
Also, we all require a complete set of building plan.
Okay.
Then we'll go to the building department. And I guess that's about it, right, Kenny? I hope so. That should be it.
We have a environmental assessment form.
Well, that'll be part of when he comes through the board. They have that in there, I think, don't they? Yes.
It was done already, but we'll need to be to look at it.
We probably have to be sharpened up with what it happens now, but. A lot of your paperwork is here, but it just wasn't all here. And the drawings were nice, but they really don't tell us anything. They kind of opened a can of worms because you could see it wasn't real building.
Very clear as to what you wanted, that's why I'm here.
Yeah, well.
Want to be in compliance with everything.
Once you change the footprint of the building. Then it has to, it requires a site plan.
And I will do that.
Okay, all right, fine.
And I appreciate everything, thank you.
All right, and then get that to us as soon as you can. When is the next meeting, Amy?
June twenty first.
Get it to us two weeks before that meeting so that we can get a review.
I will do that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. To new business. And I'm sorry, gentlemen, I can't pronounce the first word, Bofa. It was close. Yeshiva is purchasing the old, if everybody's not familiar with it, at one time, it was. The Eleanor Roosevelt Conference Center for the. Camp Wellman. Then it went into another thing for New York City, I don't remember that.
Foundation.
Huh?
Juridive Foundation.
No, that was before that, there was another one, I'm sorry. And then now the Jersey Service Foundation has it, which is. People who follow. Follow the teachings of this Russian. Whatever he was, I don't know. But anyhow, now in the interim, they've they've decided they're gonna leave and the. Yeshiva wants to take it over as an educational retreat. We have a ton of questions for you guys tonight, I hope you can answer for us. I see a lot of smiles, I like to see that.
I'll bet.
Huh?
We'll try our best.
I mean, I hope so. Uh. I think first, our engineer Bradley?
Yes.
Do you want to open?
I can, if I can bring up the picture of my questions, but I'll start off with the first one. Which was the the short environmental assessment form indicated the retreat would be for a hundred and fifty people. And kind of looking, researching the school, the school itself is three hundred and fifty. But what I don't know, is this a summer retreat for some of the kids is a hundred and fifty include employees? Or is it a hundred and fifty kids plus staff? That's my first question.
So. Want them to use the.
Yeah.
Yes.
They're not sharing anything right now. Oh, my TV's not plugged in. Hold on one second. There's nothing being shared on the screen, so if you want to continue, it's just people's faces right now.
Joel, why don't you introduce yourself and then your colleagues?
Yeah, so my my name is Joel Rosenfeld. I'm here with Rabbi Berish Rubin, who's the dean of the school, and with our attorney Stephen Barshoff. So to answer to answer your question, so first of all, as I said, Rabbi Rubin is the dean of the school. I run a summer camp in Liberty, New York, a girl's camp, for those that know it's Camp Gila. On Route fifty five, corner from Delumis Road, can I know knows the area? Anyways, so back back to your question, let me give you a little background. Bovov, as the first word, is 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 comes really from the name of a a small town in Poland before the war. That's where our grand rabbi lived, Rabbi Halstam, he was murdered during the Holocaust. And his son, Rabbi Solomon Halstam, of blessed memory, came here after the war. And started this community, which at this point in time counts approximately ten thousand families worldwide. With children that the, as part of the Bovov umbrella, there are many schools. The area where I live in Brooklyn. We have a a a girl's school with over two thousand children and boys' schools also that amount. But this property is being bought by the Bovia Shiva of Muncie, New York. And Muncie, New York is a much, it's part of the broader Boviv community. The most of the Bov community, as I said, lives in Brooklyn, New York. We have our camps, the girls' camp is my camp, Camp Gila. And Liberty, we have Camp Shalva on Hyde and Road and. In South Fallsburg. But this is, let's say, like a sister organization, which is a school in Muncie, New York, a school for. It's probably called like junior high, it's fifteen or sixteen year olds. And that school is, how many kids exactly? A hundred and twenty kids currently. Full disclosure, my son lives in that school and it's a great school. And in Muncie, they also have like a boarding school where the kids go there for the week. The kids that are not locally from Muncie, but are from Brooklyn or other places. You know, come Sunday and go home Friday, our home for for Saturday showers. So now, we want to, they want to purchase this property and come here for the summer. As part of their, it's not like it's gonna be open enrollment to anybody else from the wider community or even from the Bov community. It's basically going to be that school to transplant the kids that are enrolled in that school here. So back so that I I just tried to give a little bit of background. To answer your question, so I don't know exactly, possibly you saw, there are many Boviva Yeshivas. But one Boviva Shiva of Muncie that's located on Grove Street. In Muncie, New York, is the school that we are talking about, which has a population of a hundred and twenty kids.
Was that once a larger population, the school population? I got the three hundred and fifty off the internet, whether that's pre-COVID or what, I don't know.
Oh, so Boviva Yeshiva in Muncie also has an elementary school, which is on Viola Road. Which might possibly have that that amount. But we're talking about the, not talking about the younger kids' summer camp for them. We're talking about the, like I said, the junior high, which is tenth and eleventh grade mostly. And that's the population. It's, we are all under the umbrella of Boviv, it's like, you know, it's a way of teaching, it's, we all. Have our grand rabbi as our spiritual mentor. But every organization under this umbrella is is somewhat separate. So so Rabbi Rubin's school is only for these two grades, tenth and eleventh grade. And the population currently is at a hundred and twenty, and that's why we wrote a hundred and fifty, because it fluctuates. You know, every year, one grade is a little more kids go or less. And there is, there is for these same group of age, there's another school in Brooklyn, which they already have. A summer camp as part of the camp in Hyde and Road, so they wouldn't attend here. But the kids in our community like have a choice, or the parents have a choice to decide if they want to send to this school or to that school. So his population is somewhere between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and fifty.
Would this retreat be for boys and girls?
No, it would be for for boys only. There would be some staff members that would come, like teachers, cook or maintenance guy that would. Come with their families. But they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be like, most likely, you know, if they would come with kids, that would be, let's say. Ten, eleven, twelve year olds, they would go to other sleepaway camps, like the camp that we have on Hyde and Road, or the girls would come to my camp. In 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 camp in Liberty. But over there, it would only be for two two grades, tenth and eleventh boys.
Some of the questions about that regard, water supply and sewage disposal. You know, there are certain rated ratings of the existing systems. Would there be special events, graduations, where there could be two hundred and fifty people there, three hundred?
None of that is planned, and obviously, if there is no water or sewer capacity, accommodations would have to be made. No one would want to do that. According to, like you said, from the internet, according to the Health Department website. They show that water capacity is five hundred. We we, being that this camp, as you said, is, I don't know, like very, very old from over the years. And many different things happened there, we're still trying to to stitch together. Because the D E C has a record of a thirty thousand gallon septic field. Health Department has records that are a little bit different, obviously. We will work with the capacities that are there, and if we ever need additional capacities, we will, we will try to figure out accommodations before.
Right.
Sure. So we reached out to the foundation to ask them what they had been doing on the site. And we were told that they had had conferences that had up to a hundred and eighty five people. Within the last five years or so. So I don't know whether that was legal or not, I don't know what the capacities were, but at least that's what we were told.
Yeah, what I'm foreseeing to really put people's minds at ease is a brief engineer's report that. Talks about the capacity of the water systems. Both for delivery and storage. For the need for, you know, however many people you're going to have, plus staff, plus some kind of safety factor. There are some septic systems onsite for the cabins and then the main lodge. You know, there must be some things, some files in New York State Health Department that there's some homework to do. To basically sum up the existing documents and engineers' reports and put a a future, you know, today's spin on it as. How many people you're going to occupy this and, you know, make sure that the facilities are there. And can accommodate that need.
So so as I mentioned, I I myself run a camp. And we have over there three septic systems. You know, sand beds, et cetera, and water system. So I I taught this property a few times already. Now regarding water system, which is very easy to see, there there currently are three wells and all of them. Are continuously chlorinated and with contact tanks and holding tanks. They're actually all, all the buildings where the water is, is is fully winterized and heated. And the foundation has it running all all year round. Now, like as as you said, it's a little bit different when you have. Fifteen, sixteen year olds and they all go into the swimming pool at once and come out and want to take, you know, a hundred and fifty showers at once. Obviously, we would have to add some storage capacity. But from the research that we we did, there is a, between the older wells that are on the property. They produce over a hundred gallons per minute. Between it it between three or four wells. And that should be much more than needed. In my camp, we have seven hundred kids and girls and with with families, and we don't even have a hundred gallons per minute. But we have fifty thousand gallons of storage. So, yeah, we're well aware that we will have to do a a full study on that and figure out exactly what needs to be done.
Yeah, I would add to that, I doubt the cabins are sprinkled, but the main lodge might be. Particularly if there's a kitchen in there, commercial kitchen, which. Everybody's got to eat, so I assume that's there, but.
There's an ansel system in the kitchen, I mean, everything is, this, the, the property was. Up until now, it was also under the Department of Health purview, and as you know. Every every temporary residence or school or camp or whatever it should be, gets inspected twice annually by the Department of Health. And the foundation just had had an inspection in February. I'm the the, and the last inspection before that, I think, was in June. So this is, it's not like, I mean, this was continuously inspected, and it will continue to be inspected for for all health and and safety. This, I I actually did see the inspection reports from February and there were no, no, what they call red violations. And so the property is being, you know, kept up to par and safety and everything.
Those those should be appended to the report, you know, it basically will show, you know, that was, you know, Department of Health doing those inspections. Their reports would help, you know, tell the story, you know, this this camp has been running all along. Water quality is good and on and on.
Right.
If I still got the floor, I'm gonna keep going. The dam that is in pounds Silver Lake. Has that been breached on purpose or has the level of the lake dropped? What's the current status as far as New York State D E C is concerned?
So actually, we were there earlier today and I spoke with the caretaker, Fred Bauman is his name. And he told me that an engineer, that the D E C, they they need to inspect it, like have an engineer come. Periodically, I don't, I don't remember now if he said twice a year or once in two years. But he told me that a a engineer was just there like a month ago to do to do inspection. A couple of years ago, they had leakage underneath the dam and they were told to put bentonite to close it off. And that's why they periodically have this engineer come to check. And there's one, you know, spillway of the dam, most of the water goes through there. There's a little extra spillway on on the left side, but the engineer just saw it and said. That based on the water quality, that it's coming out clear, they see there's no erosion and whatever, so just, he will continue monitoring and periodically.
Yeah, there's there's items, I've done dams before and worked with D E C on permitting them. And there's certain spillway capacities for existing dams. You know, what we would like to see is some correspondence from D E C and so far as their latest inspections and. You know, that there isn't any red or yellow flags on it or items of concern. Often, the existing dam has to have a spillway capacity analysis. You know, we do get crazy storms now and it isn't just a hundred year storm or something much bigger. Than that, that an existing dam has to withstand. So knowing, you know, the status of any engineering reports already on file with D E C. But is this, you know, dam. Okay by them or, you know, we need to see some correspondence. Regarding that dam, does the.
I guess we we can definitely get 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 you that. But it just, I mean, as you mentioned before, right, this place is being continuously used and. And currently being used with the dam being in proper maintenance. And obviously, when when we come in, we will continue to do whatever whatever is being done now.
I I looked the dam up on New York State. Damn safe.
Yeah.
And it's a high hazard dam.
Okay.
I know what that means, I don't really know. But it's listed as a high hazard. You know what that means, Brad?
Yeah, that means that if it were to fail. You know, in a catastrophic failure, it isn't just, you know, hayfields and and something that. Gets eroded and or, you know, some woods gets riled up, it means someone could die. That means that there's habitations, there's people living downstream of the dam, that if that were to happen. There is potential someone could be seriously injured or die.
There are quite a few homes down below.
Right. So like I said, they they assured us that. It's one of the questions that we asked too before we went in, because I I'm aware of a different property camp that once had a dam that was always issues. And obviously, they they, like I said, it was just inspected a month ago. And if it was good a month ago, it should be good in two months from now, but we will continue to do what is needed, you know?
Yeah, and it was that your own engineer or was that D E C that did that inspection?
That was, the the D E C inspector was there, plus they, the foundation. Told me that they have a private engineer that comes to look, but when we asked them for documentation, they didn't really have, like, there's no filing. He just comes to check to make sure that everything is fine, but they're, they they didn't have, you know, any any official. Engineer report to to share with us.
Okay, D E C, there there are sticklers on record, so I think some of the existing records may clear all this up, but the. You know, the fact of the matter is, there's a pool proposed and a ritual bath proposed. I suspect it's high up on a bank and not anywhere near in the floodway of what go over the dam. But I don't know that's sitting here. So that's kind of the homework being assigned, if you will.
Actually, the good thing that you mentioned, the location where we're proposing to put a swimming pool and a ritual bath is up on a bank. Even there's the the main house, that big, the house in the front, the big building that you see from Lime Pond Road. That itself is approximately, I would say, you know, ten feet higher than the. Sea level, you know, the level of the pond. But this field where we're proposing these additions currently is a bump up, another approximately eight to ten feet. It's like, like really a bump up, so it would be.
I suspected it was, and you know, but you know, I had to ask the question, the, is the bath and the ritual. Is the pool and the ritual baths supposed to be for male and females? Was there going to be changing rooms for females too, like mothers of some of the students?
So no, not for mothers of the student, but as as I explained earlier, that we will have staff members, teachers that will come with their families. So for the swimming pool, there will be, you know, men's hours and and ladies' hours. Where for an hour a day or something, you will have women with their daughters. There won't be too much, but a handful, whatever it is, and then then will be the boys and the teachers would be separate hours.
Thanks, Sean.
Okay, other than the pool and the ritual baths, what what improvements are you doing? In case, you know, the water system is fine as is and other things, but are you doing any structural? Improvements on the property?
So currently, at this point. This is what we're proposing is is, you know, these two, these two additions, which are, you know, buildings, which I believe need need planning board approval. We would do internal renovations on 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 the dorms and, you know, change a little bit around the bathrooms, the showers. But that would hopefully internally, and obviously, we would file whatever we do with the building department and get the permit for that. If at any point in the future, we will want to add buildings and it's a nice, beautiful hundred and seventy, almost hundred and seventy acre property. And we will come back before the board then propose whatever we would like to do. But at this point, these are the only two structural addition additions that we would like to add. I saw, we saw in the in the code that any fence above. I believe it was eight feet, needs a planning board approval, so around the pool, we put it on the plan. We would have an eight foot high fence for modesty reasons. And that's also shown on the plan.
Okay, so I, you know, I think to to kind of sum up from my end. I think what would help the board and myself here is, you know, we've seen a site plan, but in a letter. But I'm I'm thinking of a project narrative that nails down. How many students, how many staff, what a peak day might look like. And either a part of that or preferably a separate report on the water and sewer system capacities and. And then third, a, you know, another letter report with the status of the dam and furnishing the the documents from D E C. So I think, you know, as an owner of the dam, they'll be, you'll be able to get those and. That's what we need to see is, you know, this is all well and good for a verbal, but we need to see the documents.
So I don't know what you can see on the camera, but Mr. Barshoff is taking notes of everything that's said, and we will follow up with whatever you just mentioned. And like I said, everything should be available and obviously, we will, we will not comment about property with no water sewer capacity or dam that's gonna kill people. So we'll obviously at work and make sure that that we provide the board with all of that.
Are the water storage tanks still in the basement of the big building?
There are three, there are three locations, they're shown on the map, so one is in the basement of the big building.
How many tanks are down there? There was like six.
I actually have. But I think like six, but that's. Is, that's in the basement of this building. This building, right, there's a well over here, where it says W is a well, and then I searched that. There is another one over here, is like a underground bunker over here. Across the road.
Yeah.
Also with tanks, and then there is one up here, the small shed with additional tanks. This feeds all these buildings, this feeds this, these buildings, and then this one feeds this. This feeds all these buildings, this feeds this, these buildings, and then this one feeds this though.
Now, are there any provisions for the high holidays and things like that where the water has to run constantly?
So we, there, there's no plan that anybody should be here the high holidays. Um, the plan is mostly for, for the summer, from May to September. I mean, the high holidays, everybody comes to the Grand Bay and, and Brooklyn. We don't expect um any activity here.
What about on Saturdays? Can they turn the water on and off on Saturday?
It's turn water on and off, not hot water, but cold water, yes.
One, one point of interest for you too, that I, all those roads around the camp, I see them at a fifty-five miles an hour.
Fifty-five?
Yes. They're not posted, so that makes them fifty-five mile an hour roads.
I was, when I drive, first of all, the scenery is beautiful, so I drove in, I drove much slower to take everything in. And uh, the roads are not, you know, for us city people, the roads are a little twisted. So fifty-five sound, I mean, I would think it's thirty-five.
No, they're all fifty-five. And also you have quite a few hunting clubs around you there too.
Right, the caretaker at our spa told us that um, some of the people that usually come hunting on this property um already asked if the new owner will, will allow them to, to hunt or to go um, what are called um, i- ice fishing, whatever. And obviously, if possible, because there's no construction, I'm not always going to get shot in the head, those.
Yeah.
Obviously, we would, we would extend that, you know, to anybody that, the community that wants.
Hey Ed, this is Brad, uh, could uh, could he be furnished with uh my copy of my email, my written comments? I didn't send him to him, I, I sent it to the town and I don't know if they've already been distributed or not.
I believe I have a copy over here.
Okay, thank you.
There was a, there was, Brad, there was a second one you sent last night, I think.
Yeah. May twenty-third.
It's usually July and August, um, we, we operate on a, on a Jewish calendar, lunar, it's sometimes different.
Okay.
But i- it's never, I, I, like I said, I run a summer camp since two thousand and six and we were, we were never there for June twenty-second and never after September tenth, or sometimes it shifts. But that's, that's the general, the, the, the general timeframe, um. That, that's basically, um, not, look, they, they have a, a school and not that we're planning to do this tomorrow, but there might be, let's say, being that a lot of this is um winterized and stuff. And uh, they would want to come out for a weekend, just bring out the boys, you know, to, to run around on the property that they paid so much money for. Um, that would be a possibility, obviously, with um, the, the health department has a permitting uh thing to do that. But generally, the, the, the full-time use would be the summer months.
Joel, in, in the narrative, just address that though, any of the off-season type of uses? Because I wouldn't want to get into a situation where they approve something and for some perception that the only activity that's going to happen on that property is between late June and, and early September. And then somebody screaming bloody murder because such, because, you know, in November, somebody was there for a weekend. You know, let's, Steve, you got one of them.
Right, so just, just, just uh, the rabbi asked, asked me to add something. So first of all, as I said, there'll, there'll be hunting and uh ice fishing in the middle of winter.
Well, that's going to happen whether you want it or not.
I, I wanted to say, a- as I mentioned before, my, my son learns in his school. Um, today you have Google Maps, you, you can look at it. He, he has a building on, on Grove Street, uh, one building is eighty-eight Grove Street, the next is eighty Grove Street. And uh, he's one of the only Catholic schools that I know that have a indoor swimming pool and a full gym. Um, so there, it's not like, um, okay, the boys are, you know, every time they want to play ball, they'll bring them out there. They, they have great facilities um in Monty. It's just that, that um, in our community, it's the norm, maybe it's not normal, but it's the norm, where people go out for, for the summer because the families live, um, you know, in the city, large families, tighter spaces, and we want that outing that you all enjoy um twelve months a year, not when it's freezing cold, but most of the time. So, so his plan is not to, to come here every day, to come here for a month at a time. Maybe I, I miscarried, not that coming a month at a time, even in April or May or the, I, I just wanted to leave that thing open that, let's say, I know that he does that um uh before this final, before this midterms. And he wants the kids, you know, to cram in twelve hours of study and go straight and do everything. You want to give them an outing, and you have this beautiful property, come out there and we'll, we'll knock it out for the day. So that's something that.
An occasional activity.
Really, really occasional.
To make sure you dress, that's all I'm saying.
Right.
Make sure it's addressed so that it's, it's contemplated by, by whatever approval gets.
Is there a license operator that monitors the water and sewer systems there?
The health department does twice a year inspection and um, the foundation over there um uses the service of, I think the company is called Isotronics, that they come out and do. Um, there is, there is, I know from my camp, the same thing is here. Um, once every month, you got to check for E. coli in Caliform, and once a year you got to check for nitrates. And um, there are labs, there's a lab, lab in Orange County, there's a lab in Liberty that you have to bring the bottle of water. And then every single day during operation, we have to check the chlorine level and there's a chart that goes into health department once a month. Um, documenting all that, so this will need to happen over here too. It, it's happening already, like I said, with the foundation and will obviously continue.
Yeah, and I would just mention that, you know, not exhaustively, but in the narrative that, you know, the, that's S O P, that there is someone monitoring these, you know, if a chlorinator needs some maintenance, there's somebody aligned to do that already.
Right.
Tell, tell as much as the story as you can, as short as, as few words as you can.
Now, are you going to supply us with a um, oh, what's the word?
Cookies, chocolates?
That wouldn't be bad. The site plan.
So.
No, the actual site plan, this is a.
This is, right, so this is um, i- it's a semi-site plan.
Right, because I see survey ribbons out there now.
That what?
Survey ribbon.
Um.
Somebody was surveying.
Yeah, maybe it was the, the seller, not, not us. But um, we did um retain, uh, reto engineering here a, a, a site plan. But, but with, with the, with the short time notice and um, we want to come before the board now, um, we were able to put this together. And if there's any more details that needs to be like contours or whatever, we will obviously add that, whatever is needed.
So the, the simple answer is yes. Get a site plan.
Okay.
It will show the location of the pool, the Vepa, any other changes to the.
And all the elevations.
All of that, right, everything will be there, proper elevations, um, do you?
Water courses and so on and so forth.
Do you prefer it overlaid on this kind of map, would you prefer?
No, I would prefer just a regular drawing on white.
Buy some everything you want digitally as well.
Side box, everything.
We're scraping our way into the twenty-first.
You have more than scrape, anyway, you guys are fine. Matter of fact, I'll tell you, talking about scraping, if somebody would have told me when I was like ten or eleven and went to Wellmet, that I would be standing here tonight. I wouldn't have, no idea.
You think he gave anything Howard Stern to come back?
You know what? I listened to him on the way up today.
And he was way up to Wellmet.
Uh, you know what? He wasn't there the year I was there, or he would have tortured me, I'm sure.
Ed, can I, can I just throw a couple of other things?
Yes, yes.
Uh, Joel, Steve, the, a couple of, I mean, and these are typical of, of this type of use.
Sure.
Which were, after my own experience, and I know Joel knows what we're going to be talking about. Address light, lighting, exterior lighting, especially that it's not going to bleed out in, into the, whatever the surrounding community is. I don't know how developed the area is, but you know, lighting is, is always noise, loud speakers in particular. Hopefully, there won't be any.
There's no, there, there's no plan for any.
Always the big source of complaint, the, the summer seasonal use of this nature, right?
Right.
Um, and uses of this nature tend to, you know, in that June date and that September date, everything seems to run in at the same time and run out at the same time. And maybe there'll be a weekend here or there when, when families come up to visit. Wall Street parking, ingress egress, so we don't wind up with these very small roads that, as Ed said, all are not speed limited other than the statutory fifty-five mile an hour speed limit. We, we don't want to wind up in a situation where everybody's screaming that, that there's buses parked in the middle of the road or, or cars are parked on the side of the road and, and blocking traffic and all of that. So, you know, make sure that we're, we're, I mean, th- these are not anything that I don't think you guys are, are not expecting.
Right, so, I mean, I, this is obvious, I've been to Liberty Planning Board multiple times and you know, know that. And by the way, talking about technology, you guys are ten steps ahead of Liberty, so. And, and uh.
Now, you don't intend to have any concerts or anything there, do you?
No.
So I mean, we have them.
No, we, we don't intend, like I said, th- there won't be any outdoor loud speakers. There will be a speaker system indoors for somebody to give a lecture, but nothing uh out of this world and uh nothing loud or whatever. There's no plan to, to, to do all of that. Um, as I mentioned, my son, my fifteen-year-old is, learns in this school and they were in a camp last. My third son in this school, he does a great job. And um, my, last summer, they were in a, an rented uh camp in um, in, in Monroe, in Monroe, New York, an old uh dilapidated place, now they're looking for something yet. And I never went to visit, went to visit my son, you know, he's a big boy. I have another son, a sixteen-year-old that learns in Israel, and I don't get to see him for six months at a time. So, you know, we talk on the phone every day and the, there are certain um weekends where they come home, even in the middle of the summer. But I don't think, I mean, obviously, we'll provide parking, there is an area in the back where there is already um like a dirt road parking and we'll provide parking and the, the whole school fits onto three buses. So when they come, they come three buses and when they go somewhere. Right, oh, and they do busing every week, like from the city to, to there, it's, it's, but obviously, we will provide, but we don't, we don't expect, you know, to need, if there's a hundred and twenty kids, to need a hundred and twenty parking spaces ever. So we will, we will um show all that.
Yeah, and one thing I would suggest is uh, and maybe it's happened already, but the uh, the local fire chief visits the site and, you know, if the main building does have a fire sprinkler system, it probably has a Siamese connection, there may not be one, but just, you know, keeping a, an aisle open towards the building for fire access. Just, you know, what is the current layout and are they comfortable with it as is? Or recommend, geez, you need to strike this for a fire lane or something.
I, actually, actually.
Because there, there is a standpipe going.
That's what I want to say, there are, we were just here today and I asked the kid, hey, what's this? And there are two, two standpipes.
On either side of the building.
On either side of the building where I understand the fire, the pump just hooks up and sucks out the water from the lake. And. Right, so, yeah, I mean, obviously, uh, we, when, when we operate, at least in, in Liberty, that's how it works. The, the building inspector comes down, certain buildings once a year, certain buildings every three years and, and fire extinguishers and, and sprinkles, whatever, needs to be inspected. And, and we will do that, we'll do that here.
One, one question that I have is, has, does anybody have any experience with any problems on the site? Has there been anything that's kind of come up that we should be aware of to look?
Back when Peggy was supervisor, somebody tried to burn it down.
Yeah, obviously they weren't successful.
No, but they put it, they, they built them, wasn't Peggy on the right-hand side, they built a fire right there?
Yes, two buildings have been destroyed. Destroyed, okay.
The dormitory in the back.
No, the main building.
By the road, there was a building that they used to call the.
Well, I think the, the one on the plan is really the old post office, I think it was, that's still there, but that, I could give it marked as a print shop, that's the.
That's a crossroads.
Yeah, um, according to that, there was a house, but I think something happened and then they took it down, that planned with the fire department. Yeah, but then there was, you'll see a stairway up the hill. There was a building there that.
That was a church.
That was a church.
Yeah, and that was torched.
But, but, but not any operational problems or safety issues that have come up, at least anybody's aware of?
Well, Gurgis doesn't really visit there that often, they're just weekends.
They would only come for like three days at the most.
Very, like two Sunday.
So, so it sounds like, well, we really need to pay attention to our possible issues from neglect, if they haven't.
They have been there, you know, the last few years.
So.
Not that often.
All right.
No, but they, they, they have a, a caretaker.
Oh, you, you have a, a full-time caretaker on the property?
We, we will most likely have, they, they currently have, um, his name is Fred Baumann, he lives in.
He lives in Liberty.
He lives in Monticello.
I'm on a solo, right.
And he comes, um, he, he comes like every other day, you know, to walk around and then to check everything to make sure, like during the winter, that the heat is on for the water system. Uh, 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 it's sure in there, um, they had in certain buildings we saw, because they have these um expensive pianos all over the property. And they, he was like, there's the dehumidifiers, and he comes and empties the, the humidifiers to make sure, you know, to keep the something for the pianos. So he's, he's there constantly and I, I've walked around all the buildings and um there, I mean, you know, some are old, some are, but that, that they're. They're maintained, yes. Grass is, is, is mowed and, you know, they really maintain the place.
You don't, you do know that up in the back, there's a running track and a football field.
Yes.
Okay.
And then there's right behind it, I saw like a big farm or something, but that's not a.
That's not yours.
Right. You see it here, that, you're, you're referring to this.
Yeah.
Then there's.
That belongs to J. P. Lang. This, this, this square here is the, this is the football field.
Right.
There's also a stage up there too. Used to be, maybe it fell down by now.
So when, when I went there, there was still snow on the ground. I didn't see much and maybe didn't have a chance to get all the way up there.
Any questions from the board?
I got one, I'm just a little naive on the situation on this. So is this actually a school or a camp? And this is a change of use that's taking place?
So what this is, is a summer school where the same kids, you heard it described perfectly accurately, where the kids go to school during the year, spring of the school year, and they continue through the summer. So they come up here for the summer for their education. They are like a camp in the sense that they are all here all summer. What they're doing is not the same type of thing that I did when I was at Wellmet. Um, they are coming to study, they may have some outdoor activities as well, but their principal activity is religious study. So it's best described as a school because that's principally what happens. Unlike at every school, there are other activities, but they are ancillary. So the main activity is religious education.
And is this different from what it was before?
When, 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 you should say before, before who?
Before these people, before they're, they took.
Or Gurgis.
I don't know who had it before, I'm, as I said, I'm naive.
The Gurgis Foundation.
Right.
I guess it was teaching group basically, because they came and studied the fa- the followings of a Russian.
Yes, I, I went actually online to look into the foundation because I'd never heard of. So apparently, this is an international organization that has facilities in Europe and in multiple countries around the world where this particular person, who, what I read about him, he's not, was not religious in the sense that he actually proselytized either Judaism or Christianity, particular form of religion. He's credited, at least in what I read online, as being one of the first people who taught self-enlightenment. So Erhard seminar training and some of the other things that came on years after were apparently inspired by his. were apparently inspired by his type of uh intellectual introspection. He was very much into the idea that you had to continually challenge yourself intellectually, spiritually and otherwise. And he would promote that type of activity. And in a sense, it was educational in the way he saw it of teaching people how to teach themselves. Now, I'm not a pro, a pro, pro, pro activist, but that's as best a summary as I could give you from what I read.
And I, I was quite surprised that I, I was there today and we were touring um the building and looking around and okay, here's the library. And we walked into the library and um I would say there were two hundred books about um the Gurgis Foundation and there were, there was one shelf that was labeled um core beliefs of the Gurgis Foundation. And then, so it's, it's some kind of.
It, it was, what's, what's interesting about it is that it was apparently not an organization that was into proselytizing. They were not into publicizing themselves. Everything was done apparently by word of mouth and by people who came into contact with people who came into contact with it. And there were a lot of, uh, this guy was very prolific in terms of his writing and he had a very organized way of presenting his view of how you would learn. As a younger man, um, he traveled for about twenty years with others through apparently Central Asia and other places. And it was from that experience, I didn't read much more about it than that, that he came to this kind of knowledge about how to learn and how to better develop oneself. And the rest of it kind of took off from there. And then there are foundations like this facility. There are in Europe, multiple places and in other parts of the United States. I know there's one in California. I think there's one in Colorado and I didn't read much beyond that. You're now about to get to the very end of what I learned in my search on.
I know when they were here, the license plates were from all over the country.
I believe so, yes. And, and there's apparently quite a, a following of people from different backgrounds, uh, and that it was not just uh local, but very much national and international as well.
Yeah, there were Canadian plates there too. But they were strange. They would never, you would wave to them and nobody would wave back.
That's.
We would work our horses by there and then like we weren't even there.
Wow. Well, they obviously, I guess, were tunneled into whatever they.
Whatever they were doing, yeah. They would, you'd never see them except for like an hour.
Okay.
Any other board members you've already purchased and moved?
This is not closed yet. So this has contract, but the closing is not yet.
No, I just found it. It came across on the internet.
I'm sorry?
The purchase was coming across on the internet.
Yeah, well, I'm sure that it, everything was reported on the internet. I can tell you the closing is not yet.
I saw it said it was pending.
Yes, it is pending. That's correct.
Any other questions?
Oh, you know, just, you probably, and I, I don't know that I don't remember seeing it in the application package. Since you don't already own it, you probably get.
Yeah, I own it as a proxy.
Okay, you got the owner's proxy.
So we're going to get you a detailed narrative, which would engineers report, you get your site plan. I will address all the issues that were raised today. If there are any other comments or things that occurred to anybody, um, please email me, email Joel, um, so that we can get everything addressed for you as comprehensively and as clearly as possible.
Well, I'd appreciate it if you would look into the dam.
Yes, we will.
Because I was told a few years ago that it was condemned.
Okay, we'll find out.
Now, whether they repaired it, I don't know, but I know they never brought the level of the water back up. And the water going down the brook comes underneath the dam.
Yeah, we're gonna find out exactly as well.
That's not the way they work.
No, of course.
No, I guess that one does.
The underneath spill. Anything else?
I, I wanna, I wanna add something and, and, and Ken, Ken Voucher wants to. So in town, in town of Liberty over there, right, there are um, I don't know if the number is twenty or thirty. There are a lot of Orthodox um camps, many groups. We, I'm one. There are others from all over, over the country. And whenever there's a problem in Town of Liberty, a camp would have an overflow garbage or uh, uh, noise or anything. I'm the one that gets the call. Um, the supervisor Frank DeMaio calls me, Joel, we're having an issue with this camp. And I, I, I try to smooth everything out and make sure. Um, just last week I got a call from Frank DeMaio that in the past, um, the camp community uh, put together funds and donated the fireworks in Liberty over the last years and their funds are down to zero. We'll do it again. And um, with God's help, I was able to put together eleven thousand dollars, what is the cost for Town of Liberty to have their July fourth um fireworks? And that's my philosophy, you know, is to work along with everybody in the community. We're not here, you know, like he said, to tunnel in and tunnel out. Obviously we live, um, especially with the kids, our own life and a religious life and we're very into studying and, and teaching. And but we come to camp to play ball and swim and uh, but we're here to be good friends, good neighbors. Um, build, you know, be part of the community whenever, whenever is needed when we're here. And anytime there is a complaint, we will, I will make sure that the, everything gets, gets addressed. You know, we're talking to your kids. Kids can sometimes, uh, I don't know, maybe wander off of somebody else's property, not that we condone it or allow it, but I'm saying over, over the course of, of years, things can happen. And um, if there's anybody from the community or that lives in the area, look, we're, we're, we're not here to, to, you know, impose anything on anyone. We want to have our, our quiet space in this beautiful um town over here. And we would uh contribute, you know, to, to be part of the community, whatever is needed than any of the board here town or the building department or anybody and everyone can always reach out to me or to Rabbi Ruben or whoever is to, to, to make sure that everything runs smoothly. Ken, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right.
So you have scheduled um disposal of, of, got scheduled for uh waste disposal and on a regular basis.
This is all of the.
There is, there's a compactor on, on the property behind, behind the kitchen. Initially maintained on my camp, starting already now, because we're doing it now before the summer cleanup. We have scheduled weekly pickups and.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to interview Joel and I'm going to make sure that I get all of what he has in his brain down on paper so that you'll have, but yes, it'll be, issue, there'll be discussion about water handling, sewer, waste, all of the types of things. So you'll have a complete idea of how the operations work.
And our, our building department does the fire inspection.
One of the things on your, on the map here, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, fencing is sixty.
The, the height is what is shown. Okay, we'll clarify that.
Yeah, you're here. Now, so that fence will be blend into our rural, uh, rural character out there.
I thought, oh, that's one, another thing that I had the uh, a mental note to, to make that we are open to hear from the town or from the neighbors because I know some people, some communities like earth tone colors and others want the cultured stone or everybody has and, you know, will gladly work along with whatever, like, like let's say this is a good example. So if we will build a, 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 a wall, a fence around the pool, which usually is done either with um, uh, wooden slats or corrugated metal. And uh, if, if there are colors that the town prefers.
Or material.
Sure, or material. Sure, we will work along with that. If you can tell me where I can, you know, who to speak to that, maybe you will.
I will have that information for you next month.
Yeah, okay.
Any more questions from anybody on the board? At this moment, I would like to ask, we have quite an audience. If there's anybody from the, the village or the town would like to say anything?
I have a question.
Yes.
So is the property currently tax exempted?
Right now, they make a donation to the town every year. In our tax exempt. But they, um, so five to Johnson, how much do they give us each year?
Yeah, I don't.
They used to give ten thousand.
Yeah. There was some kind of lawsuit.
Many years ago for different reasons.
I was gonna ask about that because it was the, the way the court decision, and then that was as far as I got. Right, BK before Ken. Oh.
You're lucky.
Their lawsuit because apparently there was an agreement between the town and the foundation that the foundation would make a payment in lieu of taxes. And the county sued the town over that, right? And basically said this is.
A portion of it too.
Right. Well, they said that they didn't have a house doing. Now I don't know what they're into. Seemed to me that they were kind of shooting everybody in the foot, but whatever it was, that was the decision went up to the appellate.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't know about this one, but I know in other instances at some point they, they, because there were some instances where there was some question about the, the eligibility for, for exemption.
Right.
And the county's argument was that the local government gave the exemption in exchange for, basically they, they were claiming that the exemption was bought.
Right.
By an agreement that they get a payment in lieu of tax and then the county and the school district got left in the wind.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they weren't getting anything. I think that was, that might have been the theory in this one too.
But it sounds pretty, but it sounds pretty close. So anyway, the appellate division.
That, but then apparently there's maybe made by some arrangement.
There were ten thousand originally started, started at.
And that's what got combined, just put on that, at least by the court. What happened after that, court decision doesn't say. That's all I know.
Ben, do you have anything you want to add?
Your neighbor's camp.
Yeah. Camp next door.
I do not know.
Yeah, it's supposed to go back on the roll.
Yeah, they're supposed to go back on the tax bowl.
Yeah. Because they're for profit now. So are you for profit or not for profit?
We, we are a non-for-profit. We are a non-for-profit. That camp, as far as I know, has some kind of IDA exemption or something like that.
Yeah.
But I, I'm not aware. It's just from looking around.
Yeah, I think that's running out though.
I, I wouldn't know.
Just, just so everybody's not, I don't want to think, but even, these are interesting questions, but this is, this, this question is entirely irrelevant to this board's consideration, whether, whether an applicant that stands before the board might ultimately be tax exempt or not exempt. That's not a criteria that's, that's relevant to their consideration of whether approved or not approved, a special use permit. The, the, they, the applicant, if they're the property owner and they're tax exempt, they'll make an application to the assessor and if they prove to the assessor satisfaction that they're entitled to the exemption, they'll get the exemption. If they prove, if they don't prove the satisfaction that they're entitled to the exemption, it will get denied. And then they got recourse and it takes.
Yes.
Ben, did you have anything you wanted to add since you were supervisor when we did this?
The Jeep Foundation?
Yeah. I mean, we, we made that agreement. Yes, they were. They were very nasty to me too, but.
I saw a hand up over here. Oh, Jerry.
I'll refer to Jerry first.
Okay.
You're saying now that you're gonna have a hundred and fifty students in this camp? And maybe two or three families, are you willing to sign covenant that will forbid future development and future expansion of the school?
It's.
Or are you gonna apply for a variance in two years to build the dormitory, four hundred people, six hundred people? But you've got a hundred and seventy acres, three acres owning. Could have fifty houses there. I don't know. And then an unlimited number of people in those fifty houses. Fifty families.
Just want to be sure you're finished, when you're finished, I'll.
I'm finished.
So the answer is no. Uh, we will not sign a covenant. You heard already this evening that if the school does grow future, then they would come back and ask this board for approval to expand. Nothing that would happen on the site as a school could occur without planning for approval. So if your concern is that someone will come in and develop this without somebody looking at it, that you being given notice of it, the answer to that is definitely no. Because nothing could happen, either a school expansion or any other type of development without somebody reviewing it, approving it. So no, we will not sign a covenant saying, no, we will not do what every other property owner has the right to do, which is use their property as the law allows. But we will comply with the law and we will come back and ask for whatever approval or permission is needed to do whatever it is that might be sought in the future. As right now, what you have is what the school's capacity is. It's a bit more for growth, to be honest about what might happen. So it's a hundred and twenty-five now, so they're saying a hundred and fifty. That's a reasonable number, I think, to give based on the population that they have. They need to have greater facilities. They'll come back to the board and you'll get ones.
Does that answer your question, Jerry?
It does answer my question perfectly.
Thank you.
They're not willing to sign any covenant, any restriction.
Peggy?
We have a volunteer ambulance. Are you gonna have any uh, medical facility on your premise for during the week when you?
So as a summer camp operator, um, the health department requires schools and summer camps, whatever overnight, that you need to have at least one um EMT and above. So it could be EMT, RN, or doctor, or whatever. And uh, for every two hundred kids, you need another one. So obviously we will comply with that health bump requirement and um, that, that would be um, I mean, that for sure.
Whatever the health department requires.
And the same thing is with the, a swimming pool, right? Requires an aquatics director and license, the lifeguard and CPR and EMT and everything that is requirement, required by the health department. We will be, we will be regulated by the health department. So, and we will comply with all, with all their requirements.
Now, on the drawing, I see that, and I don't know if I'm looking at the right thing. The sewage from the pool is gonna go to that existing septic system. Actually, it doesn't show it going to any septic, because it just shows the area. Where is that pool gonna empty, when you have to empty that? Because that's, that becomes sewage when it comes out of there.
Right. So, so obviously, um, you know, the, 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 we, we came here with, um, one of the reasons that we came here is, you know, to get, to get to know the board, get to know the community, start a conversation. And a, as, as you see, right, it's, we wanted to, um, you know, make it to this meeting. We put this together. It's not in a hundred percent um, exact, all, all the details. We put it right next to there because there is a leach field that used to serve an additional building, like she said, the chapel or the church that was down. So there is, should be capacity. Um, today, the newer pools that are built today with, with um liners and stuff where the water stays there year round. That holds back the walls from collapsing and then they're filtered the next year. So I'm not sure, obviously, when we will get to it, we will have a full set of engineered plans for a pool. And uh, a pool also needs to be approved by the health department, um, in addition to the town. So, and they have their engineering process.
The short answer is, we will tell you exactly what's gonna.
Because a, a few years back, that leach field started to leak onto the road.
Okay, well, that's the kind of thing that I was looking for as to where you had problems.
Yeah, that, a few years back, that did back up and was running across the road.
That's, that's the kind of thing that is very important to.
So if you were gonna dump that, I don't know how many gallons of the Mick the holes, but if, if that all went in there at once, I'm sure it would overflow onto the road.
Yeah, and it's not, uh, and it's not just the uh, you know, in the operation, the larger pools that I suspect this is one of that has a backwash. Your filters need to be backwashed, which, you know, sends flow in a reverse direction. And it produces a waste that goes to a sewer, a septic system or whatever. So there is a routine, you know, whether it's uh, every other day. But uh, you know, your pool designer needs to consider, okay, what am I doing with my backwash waste? We may need to add on to the system that may be old and small for a chapel or, you know, it needs to, you know, you don't want it to. you know, you don't want it to fail, you want it to be able to perk into the ground. So there's some investigation there.
We'll get, we'll get you full information on.
Probably wouldn't hurt to perk that, where that field is now.
That's possible.
And see what it's doing. Yeah, you doing a pool and a MICF?
Yes, they're two separate things.
Because I don't see the, I don't see.
Yeah, it's on there.
It is.
Oh, okay. All right, so pool is literally a swimming pool, and the MICF is a ritual bath.
Right.
I saw a hand up, yes.
This, this conversation makes me think this, uh, because the property's been so scarcely used for the last twenty years since I, I've. I, I would like to know if you're trying to come in a detailed study of all the existing tile fields and septic and, and all those facilities that are there, checking whether the water table in our area stand, I know it's not a lot of people, but a hundred and fifty people for two months is, is significantly more than have been on that property recently. So will there be a, a detailed study of, of waste, drinking water, uh, light? Somebody mentioned light earlier, all, all of those things?
The answer to that is yes. Um, it's required of us as an applicant to demonstrate to the board, and you'll have this information, that there are no significant adverse environmental impacts that would arise from this project. We have the burden of demonstrating that. So we will do whatever these studies are that are appropriate. As a lawyer, I, you know, I defer to the engineers as to whether it's appropriate or not. I learned growing up in the HDAC business, which is what the family business was, and put me through law school, that wise people know what they don't know, and lawyers should definitely become engineers. So we'll defer to the engineers. But the answer to your question, yes, we will look at everything that needs to be looked at to be sure of necessity, that is, of course, principally on who you impact most of all, which is around you. Um, so if you live across the street, which thank you for telling me that you do, um, if, and I, my question was to the board, but I really want to pose it to surround your neighbors. If there's anything about this property that you know of from having been a neighbor, please, I'm gonna give you my card. Call me, tell me, email me, whatever you want to do. Uh, because if we come in and we don't know what you know, we can't look the same way at those kinds of. So whatever the problems have been, and hopefully they've been none, but if there have been some, please let us know. If you've had problems, for example, when they had events on weekends and they had, or for a week, and there were two hundred people in there, and they had, and your wells weren't functioning the same way. We need to know that stuff. So if you can give me that, here's, here's my call, they give it to them, you can have this one, Chris. All right? And, uh, and I'm, so that we're clear, because I, I'm, I'm, are you related to one another?
Related.
Okay, cool. So I answered his question, no, I answered your question, yes. I mean them both earnest. Okay, so when I say we're gonna look into this, we're really gonna look into it. And part of the reason is, is not only is the law, it's the right thing. Equally, it's the right thing to do for a property owner. Every property has the right to use their land the way that the constitution and the laws of the state of New York and this municipality allow. So when I answered you truthfully, I'm answering you straight up, don't lawyer nonsense, straight up language. That no, my client isn't going to give away its property rights or sign them away for anybody. That's what they're entitled to as a parent. I know they're not a special group that has to give away their property rights in order to come to a meeting. On the other hand, they have to be, you heard it from Joel. And by the way, if you don't satisfied with his response to something, you call me. Because I, I, I pass up or tougher. And I will tell you that I have a lot of positive clients. Some of you can Google my name, you'll know who I am, who I represent. One of the things that I say to every one of my clients is, you wanna be trusted and respected in the community? If you come in, you understand what that community needs and wants for you to be a good neighbor. And that's what you do. And you didn't hear it from me prompting them, you heard Joel say, all right, you tell me what kind of, what kind of aesthetics do you want? What would you like to see on that fence that's gonna surround that pool? He'll tell us what the materials are.
I appreciate some of our input.
I, I want it, I really do. What's the point of doing this otherwise? Look, there's so many problems in the world. I mean, I don't have to tell everybody here what they are. I don't understand, I've never understood, why people can't just decide to be good neighbors to one another. We're all different, we all come from different backgrounds, we all come from different places. That doesn't mean we can't be good neighbors. So to me, the first thing that a person comes and says when they come before a planning board is, I want to be a good neighbor. And you tell, tell me how. This clairvoyance is not one of the qualities communication is, honesty is, and forthrightness is. So you're gonna see everything laid out, there's gonna be a detailed narrative of all of the things that have been asked for here. And we will look into anything you want me to look into in terms of environmental impacts, we're gonna do all of that stuff.
As long, I, I, I'll just keep going if I can, as long as you're doing what the, what's required from the board and what's required for, uh, the environment, then that's, that's good for me.
Good.
Thanks.
Uh, I'm, I'm also one of your neighbors. Our house is the right.
I'll give you a card too, hold up.
Where, 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 where do you live? On Blind Pond Road.
Yeah, Blind Pond Road.
Yeah, you're right. If the question of your property improvement.
I'm one six six, Blind Pond Road, you can't see the house.
One fifty-four.
Okay, as I, as I, I wanna tell you that, um, last week, um, last month, um, they say, you know, the difference between a man and a boy is the price of a toy. I like to play with drones. And I, I sent up a drone, and it was very windy that day. And it landed in the wooded area close to your house. If you ever find a drone there.
Didn't get it back?
I didn't get it back, the wind carried it away, and it fell into the swamp.
Oh, and do you have a bomb on the road?
No, no, it's, it's, I'm Blind Pond Road, further up, on, on the right, coming from our property on the right side, anyway.
Um, so I just, I just wanted to clarify for myself a couple of things. Tonight, this meeting tonight is specifically for the pool in the MICF. And that's, that's what this is about, is that right?
Uh, well, it's partly about that, sure.
But that's the variance application.
No variance is being sought, a special permit is being sought.
Special, so this is a meeting for a special permit specifically for the bath of the metal pool.
No.
No?
They're, they're, they're applying for a special use permit and site plan approval pursuant to the town zoning law for, for the overall use of the property. And they're gonna develop a site plan, and they're gonna, and they're gonna develop a, a, a use plan that, that's designed to comply with what the zoning law requires, what the State Environmental Quality Review Act requires, what the health department regulations require, and whatever our professional staff, such as our, uh, such as our engineer, recommends in reason. And, uh, and that, so, but there's, right now, there's nothing being asked for that, about the variance. Um, of, I mean, they're presenting an application that's designed to comply with our zoning law, not seeking for relief or, or some waiver of our zoning laws. As I understand it so far, that's what I think.
That's right, that's exactly right, Ken. And if we were asking for variance, then this board would be referring us to the zoning board of appeal.
Okay, so I'm just, all I wanna, the only reason I raise my hand is to try to get a sense of the sequencing of as things develop, as things evolve, and as your plans develop, um, how do we stay abreast?
Sure.
And in terms of.
Sure.
All we know of, for example, now, the only thing we know that's different from current physical plant status and use is the pool in the MICF. Any other changes, for example, how would we know?
So, two things. One, whatever the village does in terms of posting or making materials available, that's what the village does. And the, I'm sorry, the town, my apologies. Got that right. Um, anybody who would like it, I gave you my card, you send me your email. Everything that we submit to the town, I'll send you a copy. It's the simplest way that you get it, so it's my pleasure. So anybody, that goes for anybody. I don't care how many emails I have to send, that makes no difference. Yeah.
So I hope you have enough. Don't print more, don't worry.
If you send me an email and just say, I reference the application, say, please notify me, we'll send you copies of whatever you submit to the, to the town. All right? Now, aside from that, there will be a public hearing before this is to be approved. That, you'll all get notice of. Um, I will have to check to see who's.
There'll be notice published in the newspaper, and under our zoning law, where we, we require that, uh, notice be given to adjoining property owners. So adjoining property owners would mean any, any property that abuts this property or property that's across a public highway through them as well. That's as it's defined in our.
Understood. So that's where the official notice will come from. And you will, you know, again, if you're entitled to that, still get it.
And, and that.
Of course, anybody can come in and can make comments on the application, when, when it's a public.
And those letters, when they're sent out, are registered receipt, we questioned, so we do know they send them.
I actually, I'm landlocked, I don't actually own anything that's officially on Blind Pond Road, I just have a, a right of way. But, so my, just. One last question, is there any, is there any affiliation or connection with the Hasidic Girls Camp up the road in the Sternberg?
First of all, um, it's not Hasidic camp. Um, you know, we can talk another how about all the, the, all the factions and divisions that there are. We're all Orthodox Jews and whatever, but there's zero affiliation. They're a group called, um, Shema Camps, I think, and the Sternberg had their own four camps, but this is not affiliated at all.
Question, do you have any, just referring back to what they were saying, do you have at this point, with the property as it stands, as you're buying it, do you have future stage plans? Of thoughts of advancement that you've got stage one, stage two? Or anything like that?
So not, not at this point, then the second we will have, we will come, come before the board. And again, this was very preliminary because we're in the contract stage, except for.
But you're not talking about that. We, what you're asking is about, do we have plans for future growth that we haven't told you about? The answer is no.
Barry, if they did, they would have to disclose that as part of the secret process. Because the secret review has to take into account everything. Otherwise, it's segmentation and it's gonna go down another dead road.
And we don't want that. Did you guys drop off a check tonight for our engineer?
It already, I was overnight.
Overnight? Oh, it was overnighted?
Yeah, you should have received it already.
Did you get a crystal?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Because I must, we, uh.
Have the tracking number, can I look it up?
You can look it up, our, my office had to close early today for the board of assessment review. So we were not upstairs.
But it was.
Okay.
It was overnighted, so that it was two arrived today.
FedEx did come, so.
Oh, FedEx did come? Okay, so if they didn't.
No, it wasn't for us, that's how to think about it.
It, it was, it was USPS. It was USPS express mail, so.
Then no, then I did not, I did not get it today. Um.
We have a, we have a tracking, you don't get it tomorrow, we have a tracking.
I'll take your card too, how about that?
Anybody else?
Can I have one too?
Of course. One too?
Have as many as you like.
I think he only has one left.
You're welcome. No, I have another whole folder. There's a question in the back. One more guy's right here.
There's another question.
Jerry, I'm sorry.
Are you going to do a full environmental impact study for every aspect of the project? Or are you trying to vote this under the short form, which is basically continuation of the existing use, which would not require an environmental impact study?
Okay, so, um, with great respect, let me give you seeker one oh one, so that we're all speaking the same language. So there's an environmental assessment form, and then there is an environmental impact statement. There's a long form and a short form environmental assessment.
I'm aware of that.
So we will provide whatever it is that the town tells us to provide in terms of environmental assessment. We do not make that determination. Town will tell us, if they feel that the short form is insufficient, then we'll provide the long form. Regardless of whether the short or the long form is required, because it's really not the nature of the form that matters, we have to provide information to the town to show that there are no, that is zero potential significant environmental impacts in order to not have to prepare a full environmental impact statement. So we're gonna provide that information because no applicant wants to prepare a full environmental impact statement if there are no significant adverse environmental impacts. So we will have that burden of showing that. It is the board as the lead agency who decides whether we've met our burden or not. We don't make that decision. So we will submit the material, then the board will decide what the environmental impacts are, if any. If they determine that after our submissions have been made, that there is a potential for at least one significant adverse environmental impact, they will make us do a full environmental impact statement. If they determine that we have shown there is no such potential, and they will issue what is called a negative declaration, OEIS will be.
Familiar with that problem.
Okay, so then you know what we're gonna do.
The, the check was delivered one twenty-seven PM by the front desk.
I have another question.
Yes.
What, what's the actual scale of the pool in the MICF? Like, what's the capacity of that?
Would you like to come up and look at the map?
Sure.
What's the scale, where is this?
I wanna be sure, I don't know if the improvements were drawn to scale.
No.
So we're gonna make sure that next time you have an accurate size, because I wouldn't want you to assume that that's either accurate or inaccurate.
No, but you, we did, you need to.
Absolutely.
Do a full drawing. I'm just only giving you this.
Is this online? This map?
Yeah.
Can I take a picture?
Yeah, of course, yes, sure.
Doesn't recognize me with my mask.
And I, I have that map electronically, so if you give me your email, I'm gonna be able to email it to you.
Oh, great.
All right.
I, I sort of assumed that this, I know the property a bit, and I would, you know, I would actually trespass and hick around and.
There you go. Trespassing, you're hunting or ice fishing.
I, I know, I know that kind of.
Not more recently than three years ago.
That's kind of the prosecutor too, you gotta watch out.
I, I, I sort of, I assume that the MICF and the bath are actually gonna be up more towards the Riot Road segment, but they're actually right on our road, yeah, right on Blind Pond. Actually, they're visible from both of us. Thank you. Any other questions from the audience? If you want to see your comments there. Or you comment, set us in a direction that we can follow. Thank you for your presentation, I think it's been very complete. And I'm glad you like us better than Liberty. We're a lot smaller.
Thank you very much.
So I made, I made a joke earlier that I'll bring chocolates and cookies, and it's also part of our culture to, you know, especially we're coming into new community, and we brought along some pastries for everybody. So, for the nation too. Yeah, Rogal. All right, thank you again, thank you to boards, and again, we're here to, to, you know, to answer all questions and, and, and to do everything the proper way, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just should put it in here. All right, next. Have a good taste. Oh, my God. Where I work.
Anything else?
Well, we're not, we're not going to say, probably carrying you.
No, nothing. No, not yet.
We're not ready for that yet.
So we're waiting for them to come back.
Let's all take a care. Then I think we've run the gauntlet. So I'd like to thank everybody for attending.
Yes.
My first time back in two and a half years, and nice to see everybody.
Take a motion to close.
And without, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much.